Good evening. I wish to welcome everyone to the North, excuse me, to the Lee County Board of Commissioners here at the Dennis Wicker Center. I see we have a large crowd. I do apologize for the seating arrangement. Usually the seats are set up in theater form, but they're having a special program tomorrow, so they have the tables set out for your convenience. I just ask that you break out no alcoholic beverages or anything like that. Thank you. We will get started here. If we could please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, Lord with just gracious hearts, Lord, asking you to guide each and one of us here tonight, Lord, to have decisions that will have impact on our county and our citizens, Lord. We ask for that wisdom and that mercy, Lord. Lord, also, we want to think of the other countries, not only ours here in the United States, but the other countries that are going through devastation as Turkey and Ukraine. Lord, let us just keep those in our thoughts and prayers, Lord, each and every day. Lord, again, we just magnify you, lift you up, and thank you for the wisdom you're going to give us tonight. Thank you for each citizen here tonight to voice their opinions, God, and that's our right here in America, God. Just give them safe mercies and travel at home and protect our families, and God bless America. We love you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We do have a busy agenda for this evening. Are there any additional items to add to the agenda?
I'd like to have the tax administrator make some comments regarding the upcoming appraisals and possible legislative tax changes.
We can place that under old business. Mr. Brown? Any other additions to the agenda? Seeing there are none, are there, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion been moved to approve the additional items added to the agenda. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the consent agenda. Any questions? Any discussion?
Vote to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the presentation of a proclamation. Can you hear me? Are we on? We are on. Thank you. Before we get started, I do want to say that I've had the pleasure of knowing Dr. Crumpton since July of 2007. I'm sitting in my vehicle getting ready to do some business in my former assigned duties, and the phone rings, and it's Dr. Crumpton welcoming me and congratulating me on my appointment to the Lee County Commission. Here we are, so many years later. Proclamation honoring retiring Dr. John Crumpton and his years of service to Lee County. Whereas Dr. Crumpton has worked Lee County Government for more than 15 years, which began with his role as Finance Director from January of 1992 to July of 1993, and continued when he returned to the county as County Manager in July of 2007. And as County Manager, he serves on the Airport Authority Board, the North Carolina Association of County Commissions Risk Assessment Pool Board of Trustees, the State Employees Credit Union Local Board Spring Lane Branch, and on the Sanford Area Growth Alliance Board, which he also helped to establish the organization. And whereas during his tenure, Dr. Crumpton led Lee County Government and the county itself through a massive tornado that came through the community in 2011. And whereas, Dr. Crumpton and his team have been instrumental in a number of capital projects, including the construction of the WB Wicker Elementary School, upgrading Lee County High School, coordinated the startup process for the new library, emergency training center expansion, developing the workspace under the courthouse for the EOC, and backup PSAP, Raleigh Executive Jetport Expansion, as well as the procurement of several other properties, including the Buggy Building, Summit Building, Douglas Drive Building for IT and Colts, the Magnetti Marielli property for CCC, and the Transmatic Building for Caterpillar. And whereas, there are several parks and recreation projects Dr. Crumpton oversaw during his Lee County management career, including rebuilding the Lee, excuse me, the San Lee Park, dam, and spillway, the construction of the new nature center at San Lee Park after a fire burned down the old facility, the renovation of the San Lee Gravity Park mountain bike trails and hiking trails, procuring land for the OT Sloan and San Lee Park Expansion and the Parks and Recreation Phase One Master Plan. And whereas, Dr. Crumpton also highly valued Lee County Government's employees and implemented a number of programs to increase positivity in the workplace, including the creation of the Employees Wellness Clinic, introducing many employee appreciation programs to recognize county employees, the Employee Evaluation Program, and the Employee Satisfaction Survey, the Learning Lee Program to educate employees and citizens regarding Lee County's mission, and succession planning with the introduction of the need for Assistant County Managers. And whereas, it is the desire of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to congratulate the achievements of Dr. Crumpton and to express appreciation to him for his dedicated service and many contributions to Lee County, and now therefore be it proclaimed by the Lee County Board of Commissioners that it recognize and honors the more than 15 years Dr. Crumpton has invested in furthering the mission and purpose of Lee County Government, and it wishes for Dr. Crumpton continued success in all his future endeavors. Presented this 20th day of February 2023. And if I could, if I could have a motion to approve the resolution, please.
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the resolution on behalf of Dr. John A. Crumpton. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if you please join us, thank you very much. Up front here with a picture, we'll get a group photograph, as well as Mrs. Crumpton. the back, all my department heads who are here to support me tonight. Thank you for being here. You'll get your speech tomorrow at the department meeting. And that was my wife Catherine. I think it's her second meeting here. At a county commission meeting in 15 and a half years. The first meeting, she was mad at me. She was upset I wasn't proposing a big salary for school teachers and employees like herself. So anyway, thank her. She's been great. It's tough being the wife of a local government manager. So I asked the chairman if I could say a quick, few quick words. I know we have a lot of business, but had the opportunity here, my last meeting, I'm going to take it. So local government's about relationships, and none was better than with this Board of County Commissioners. I've worked for 22 commissioners in my tenure. I'll read their names in, in an order that you'll understand in just a minute. But Taylor Vorbeck, who's here, Bill Carver, here, Cameron Sharp, Mark Lovick, Ariana Lavarié, Kevin Dodson, John Quigle, Jim Womack, Ricky Frazier, Tim Sloan, Kevin Dodson, and then Andre Connect, who along with Commissioner Smith are probably the second longest-serving members on this board. Want to thank Dr. Connect for all the great conversations we had. You should be playing a lot of poker in your retirement, sir, because you have the best poker face of anybody on this board. It's hard to tell when you're trying to tell a joke or when you're trying to be serious. It's been a lot of fun. And then I've had six great chairmen, very fortunate, Bob Brown, Richard Hayes, Linda Shook, Charlie Parks, Amy Dahl Ripple, and Kirk Smith. Only three of the six are still with us, so I tell you how tough a job being chairman of this board is. It's not an easy job, and Commissioner Smith, we've had a great relationship. I've had a great relationship with all my chairman. Been very fortunate for what the board did. But the original board that hired me, there was only six, because Commissioner Smith had not been appointed yet. So that was what he brought up. One of my first duties was to welcome him to the board. So Bob Brown, Jerry Lamond, Jamie Kelly, Ed Pascal, Linda Shook, and Mr. Reeves. So interesting group. Again, only three of them are still with us. And the longest-serving member of this board, Mr. Reeves, want to thank you for your friendship, your counsel. You're a wise politician, I will tell you that, and you gave me a lot of great advice. So thank you. And thank you to the board, and thank you to everybody who's here supporting me tonight. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the public hearings. We have a zoning map amendment, rezoning application, and staff report, and I lost Amy.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Yeah, so a little personnel change here. I'm taking over for Curtis. So that's right. It's, the first item on the agenda is Mr. Thomas Beck is requesting to rezone one parcel of land totaling 2.27 acres owned by Mr. Beck himself with access to Valley Road between Red Holly Drive and Wildwood Drive. It's depicted on Lee County Tax Parcel 9624736079, wishing to rezone it from restricted, or excuse me, residential restricted to residential agricultural to allow for the placement of a double-wide manufactured home on the property. Mr. Beck has submitted the rezoning, or excuse me, the zoning map amendment application for your consideration. This is a standard, general use rezoning request as opposed to a conditional zoning request. Therefore, no site plan or subdivision plan are required as part of the rezoning request. The long-range plan identifies the site as countryside, which seeks to protect agricultural and undeveloped lands outside urban service areas, preserves the county's agricultural heritage, conserves and maintains rural lifestyles, and has limited residential density. The local example is the Avens Ferry Road Corridor in northeast Lee County. For further information regarding the site, available infrastructure overlays and natural features are likewise included in the provided agenda packets. The rezoning request complies with the Plan San Lee Long Range Plan designation of countryside, which lists RA residential agricultural as a desired zoning district. And furthermore, the site has slightly over two acres of land, which fits well with the desired density of one dwelling unit per two acres as recommended by the Plan San Lee. Staff is supportive of this zoning request, and this rezoning appears to align with the current low-density and low-intensity development in the general area of the site and is in congruent with the future land use plan. And this concludes my staff report, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Thomas? No questions? Okay. I'll start the, we'll open the public hearing. The public hearing is now open regarding the rezoning request by Thomas Beck. All those in favor, I have Mr. Beck has spoke, or excuse me, has signed up to speak on behalf of this. Mr. Beck?
Good afternoon, everybody. Appreciate that you all.
Can we get the microphone to Mr. Beck, please? Mr. Beck, just state your name and your address for the record.
Good afternoon to everybody. I'm not too good at speaking. I've never been a good speaker. But only thing I'm trying to do is trying to get my land, you know, had to go, I'm trying to put me home back on my, on my land. About 10 years ago, my other house burned down, and I had insurance on it, but then we were trying to fix the house, and afterwards, they was, called a storm come through, let blow down loads, it messed up my house. And so then we got the insurance, the money from the insurance to fix the house. But while we were fixing the house, our house caught fire and burned down. And so I'm now, here 10 years later, just trying to get my house, me and that house, put back in my own place. And so they told me that I couldn't, I had to have my land rezoned, had to go have it rezoned, and so that's what I'm trying to do. And I'm not a rich person. I'm just trying to, with a, get a margin. They say I didn't make enough money or, or what, to get a margin. And the type, they say they couldn't sell me a margin under $200,000. And I'm a disabled person, and I'm retired now, and, and so I just trying to get me a house like that. If I get me a double-wide, get it rezoned, get me a double-wide, get a cheap double-wide, put back on my place. And that's what I'm trying to do. And I appreciate
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for the rezoning request? Anyone opposed to the rezoning request? Seeing there is no one for or anyone else for or against, I will close the public hearing, and the public hearing is now closed. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing on the zoning map amendment application and staff report, and Thomas is here again.
Here I am again. Good evening, and thank you, Commissioners and staff. Ms. Sally Nobeling is requesting to rezone two parcels of land totaling 2.86 acres owned by Taproot Holdings LLC, addressed as 2721 Tranway Road, from RA to LI. This is to allow the expansion of an existing construction equipment sales and leasing business on the subject property. Ms. Nobeling has submitted the zoning map amendment request for your consideration. This is a standard general use rezoning request as opposed to a conditional zoning request. Therefore, again, no site plan or subdivision plan are proposed. Excuse me. The long-range plan identifies this site as countryside, which seeks to protect agricultural and undeveloped lands outside the urban services area, and preserves the county's agricultural heritage. Excuse me. Sorry. The local example is Avens Ferry Road Corridor yet again. For further information regarding the site, available infrastructure overlays and natural features are likewise included in the provided agenda packet. The rezoning request does not comply with the Plan San Lee Long Range Plan, which does not list light industrial as a desired zoning district. However, the applicant has an existing light industrial business located within the LI zoning district that does encompass the front site along Tranway Road. So where the applicant has worked with staff to recombine the property in such a way as to protect existing, existing housing in the rear of the property and, oh, thank you. Already existing and is seeking to an extension towards the rear of the property, and the intended use will need to be, will need to meet the requirements of Section 10.8 Design Standards for Industrial Development Along Thoroughfares and Freeways. Staff are thereby supportive of this rezoning request as the request does appear to align with the current development patterns at the front of the site along Tranway Road, and the boards will need to take into consideration any existing residential uses and existing light industrial along Tranway Road when making their decision. So that concludes my presentation, and I'll stop for any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Thomas regarding this rezoning request?
Do you know if they're just looking to add more equipment to the site, or is there more buildings that are going to be added to it?
Sure. My understanding is that they are seeking to just expand their outdoor storage.
Okay.
Just keep in mind, though, that, you know, whatever comes with LI zoning can go there if, if this rezoning is approved.
Okay.
Any other questions? Without further ado, I will open the public hearing for or against this rezoning request. Public hearing is now open. I do have two individuals who have signed the public hearing list. Please, when you come to the podium, please state your name and address, and let us know if it's for or against. So I'll take anyone who is for the rezoning request. I have two individuals, William Griffin and Eddie Winstead.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Eddie Winstead. I'm an attorney here in Sanford representing Taproot Holdings, and I'm going to be brief.
Address, sir?
Pardon?
Your address, please.
1410 Elm Street.
Thank you.
The property to be rezoned is directly behind what is currently zoned, light industrial, and both of the properties immediately to the east of that going Tranway Road towards Jonesboro. Both of those properties are also zoned light industrial at this time, so it's not out of keeping with what's already existing there. In response to your question, primarily, this is going to be for an expansion of the equipment yard behind the property. This is a company, it's a division of a very large construction company, and they lease and repair heavy equipment used in construction. And again, this is nothing that's terribly out of the ordinary. It's just an expansion of what is already there. Be glad to answer any questions. Ms. Nobeling and Mr. Haynes with Taproot Holdings are also present in case anyone has any specific questions.
Question from Mr. Winstead. Commissioner Carver?
None.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have William Griffin on here. For or against, sir? Just state your name and address when you come to the podium.
My name is William Griffin. I'm the resident at 2801 Tranway Road. Really, I'm neither for or against. I just had some questions. I spoke with Mr. Haynes prior to the meeting, and he answered most of those. The biggest one that I had is, I'm a new resident to Lee County. We purchased the property we have because of its seclusion from the main highway. That was really the only thing I was concerned about. But I feel confident with what Mr. Sharon has spoken with me about and what I've heard tonight, that it should be okay. And just layoffs, it was brought up, what could it be in the future? What could this land be used for in the future?
Could you please give all the light industrial applicable uses?
So I'll speak for the, to the board, as well as to the audience, and as well as the gentleman here. So some examples of uses permitted by right within LI, computer and software sales, a convenience store with or without gas sales, dry cleaning firm and laundry, farm, landscape garden supplies with or without outdoor storage, finance and insurance services, florists, hardware, home centers, lumberyard with or without outdoor storage, motor vehicle repair and service, motor vehicle towing, office buildings, pharmacy and, pharmacy and drugstore with or without a drive-through, printing and publishing services, real estate sales, rental and leasing, services to buildings and dwellings. So for example, extermination, janitorial services, landscaping, carpet and upholstery, packing and crating with or without outdoor storage, again, contractor's office, as you could imagine, with or without outdoor storage, fitness gyms, spas, religious complexes, schools, manufactured housing, manufacturing, metal manufacturing, pharmaceutical manufacturing, textile mills, and apparel manufacturing, and warehouses. So it's typically a list of your intense commercial, but also some minimal manufacturing, so some industrial uses as well.
Thank you.
You don't have a copy you can give the gentleman?
Thank you. All right. I think I'm okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for or against rezoning requests on Tranway Road? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Next item on the agenda is public hearing. Hold on, three pages here. Rezoning requests. Mr. Lee, you on this one? You're up.
Thank you, Commissioners. Apologize for that. This is item 4C, planning board item 202222. That's a rezoning application by Michael Blakely. So Michael Blakely of Drafting and Design Services, Inc., is requesting to rezone three adjoining tracts of land comprising 57.17 acres owned by Frederick Kruger and Karen True Love Kruger, located at 4191 Swan Station Road, from residential agricultural RA to the Swanee Lake RV Resort Conditional Zoning District, to allow for the development of a campground as illustrated on the Swanee Lake RV Resort Plan Set that was submitted as part of this application. This is a site plan, subdivision plan specific, conditional rezoning request. Therefore, the conceptual development plans and proposed conditions are required as part of the rezoning request. The site is located on Swan Station Road between McDougald Road and St. Andrews Church Road. The site is primarily vacant and wooded, but one parcel contains a single-family dwelling as of now. The long-range use plan, land use plan identifies the site as countryside, which seeks to protect agricultural and undeveloped lands outside of urban service areas, and seeks to preserve the county's agricultural heritage, conserves and maintains rural lifestyles, and has limited residential density. The local example is the Avens Ferry Road Corridor in northeast Lee County. Further information regarding the site, available infrastructure, overlays, and natural features are likewise included in your agenda packets for your review. are likewise included in your agenda packets for your review. In conclusion, staff believes that this rezoning request partially complies with the Plan San Lee Long Range Plan designation of countryside, as the proposed project seeks to create a space where the natural environment is retained for recreational purposes. The proposed project is noncompliant in terms of the density of the RV spaces in cases where the site is fully occupied. However, it will be up to the Commissioners to determine whether the temporary nature of an RV site should be considered when discussing developmental density for specialized projects such as this one. Furthermore, it will be up to the Commissioners to determine how the county should approach agritourism in the countryside future land use area in an RA, currently RA-zoned zoning districts. This concludes my staff report. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Lee? Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Vorbeck?
Is there anything required? I know it says Morris Pond. Is there anything testing done on water or if it's even sanitary to step into?
I would defer to the applicant's engineers to answer that question, but I don't believe we do any local testing in cases like this.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovett?
No.
Commissioner Carver?
Under uses permitted for the special projects like this, we have campgrounds and it says C Section 5.29. I'm just curious about how broad the definition of campground is.
Let me grab that from the staff report. I'm not aware of Section 5.29 off the top of my head, but this is a conditional rezoning request, so the conditions that apply are specific to this one zoning district as proposed by the applicant and as depicted on the site plan. So, the only conditions that should apply are the ones that are listed in the staff report that they specifically listed. And then you can also look at your neighborhood meeting materials that I put at your seats prior to the meeting. Those have additional rules and conditions that were decided upon at the neighborhood meeting with the residents.
You did present it as a, falls under this category because it's a campground though, correct? Isn't that what you said at the beginning, I thought?
No, I don't believe so, sir. I think it was, I believe I was just stating that the intended use is to be a campground, but in terms of actual usage, in terms of zoning specifically, it's its own unique zoning district. It's not a campground use per se, it's just the zoning district is for a campground specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Just Commissioner.
Any other questions, Mr. Lee? Seeing there are no other questions from Mr. Lee, I will now open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open regarding the rezoning request for, by Michael Blakely of Drafting and Design Services. Anyone for, please, come forward. And if you would please state your name as well as your address for the record.
Michael Blakely, Drafting and Design Services, 6728 Carvington Road, Sanford, North Carolina. I'm back with another campground. So, to answer the question that you had about the section that is referred to, 5.29, what we did with our design is we met all the requirements in that campground section. And one of them being, I don't know, I don't remember what all of them are, but one of them being a 25-foot greenbelt that was required, the setbacks between the campers, 15 feet minimum setbacks, and if you'll notice in the layout that we did, the campers are all offset on each side of the lots, so they, they meet the requirement. If we could get the presentation.
Please.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So, what we did was put together a presentation like I've done in the past, kind of give you an idea of what, what the intentions of the site are. It was gone over by Curtis. The site is located between McDougald Road and John Gardner Road on Morris, what was called Morris Pond. The site, the site consists, things quit. The site consists of 57.16 acres total. We are developing 30% of that area with the campgrounds. Thirty, 31% of the property is the lake. 17.8 acres of the lake is currently on this property and as you can see, it goes to the south also. As stated before, it's a single-family residence on, on the lake currently. I think it's quit. With our site, we've got proposed 80 RV campsites. They'll be sized 50 by 75. They'll be located on the north and eastern side of the site, adjacent to the lake. All the internal roads will be a 24-foot gravel road is what we have proposed, but as we had done in the Cape Fear campground, we're actually looking at doing pavement. But we're going to give the owner the option gravel or pavement. There'll be a office ship store, 60 by 80. The internal site will allow for fire apparatus and obviously campers. We have 100-foot cul-de-sacs at the end. All the internal roads will be private. We have a 25-foot greenbelt as required by 5.29. We are proposing for all of that to be planted where the campers will be as a evergreen, an evergreen opaque screen, and we'll probably do the cypress, Lethal Cypress that usually grow like six feet a year, and there'll be minimum six feet planting at, at the development of the site. And of course, I bring a site with something else unique. This one actually has some aqua lodges that we got proposed on the lake, and we've got some, some examples in the packet that we submitted. Here is just a concept of what the sites will look like. Due to the nature of the site, it has a lot of grade on it. We'll have to grade and take out most of the trees, but then we'll plant it back and vegetate it like you see here in these pictures. Here's some examples of the aqua lodges that'll be placed on the lake. They will not have motors, they won't move, they'll be moored permanently to the, to the dock. One of the questions that came up in the neighborhood meeting is what, what's the signage going to look like? We are proposing this type signage over the top of the road. We want to make it aesthetically pleasing, not something with neon lights glowing vacancy. Here's an example of what the ship store will look like. Utilities, all utilities will be private. We are going to utilize public water in Swan Station Road. However, everything inside the site, including hydrants, will be private. There'll be private septic, pump station will be required. This, the septic site on, on there is on the far southeast corner, and we have elevation difference, so we'll have to do a pump station. All of that will be private. Also, I just noticed on this slide, proposed with the site, we have two single-family residences. The developer that's doing the project, Vaughn King, which he's going to speak tonight, is also, is also planning on living on this property. So, it's going to be his place, permanent place of residence along with running this So, as required by the conditional zoning, as required by the conditional zoning, we had a neighborhood meeting and lots of times, these are very informative and this one was. We had quite a few people show up. We only notified the adjacent property owners because that, that was the requirement of the conditional zoning. And some of the, some of the questions that the people had was about the character and of the, of the campground. You know, what, what was it going to look like? Was it going to be nice? Was it going to be rundown? And so, what we did to ensure this is we added additional conditions to our, to our application, as you see here in your packet, and I've got them regurgitated here on the, on the map. One of them is gas motors will be prohibited on the lake. No permanent structures attached or detached will be allowed on RV sites, so you won't have any porches, screened-in porches, anything of that nature. The sites will only contain the camper, whatever vehicles, a picnic table and a fire pit. So, there won't be any junk allowed or anything on the site. One of the other questions is, we found out that one of the neighbors is building a house immediately adjacent to the, to the site, and one of their requests was visibility, that they didn't want, they didn't want to be able to see the campers and they were concerned about people coming across onto their property. So, what, what we spoke with them in the meeting and agreed upon was actually showing, was doing a six-foot wooden privacy fence that will go in immediately at the development of the site, and it'll border along them and run to the back and border one of the properties in the south. And I've got a picture of that next, of where that area's at. Another requirement, RVs and campers must have the ability to be mobile at all times. They've got to be NC DOT worthy, that's in our conditions, so permanent sites, it's not going to be. These are going to be temporary RVs and campers. One of the other requests in the meeting was about signage to keep people from going over on the other properties. So, they've asked that we post the property and we've made that a condition, so that stays as part of the conditional zoning, must be posted. The campsites all will be designated for less than a year stay. That was one of the other requests. The neighbors felt like it would turn into like a low-income housing, and, and in an effort to show that we're going to make this a, an amenity to, to the county and a benefit is, is to limit those stays and keep, keep this campground clean and, and inviting for, for residents. As I mentioned before, the opaque vegetative buffer along the property lines adjoining will be maintained at all times. And we were, we were going to leave the vegetation in place, but like I said, with the grading, we'll have to remove some of that and, and replace it. And actually replacing it will be better because we can put an opaque type of planting there instead of trying to use the existing hardwoods that are on the site. The fence that I mentioned, the 700 feet of fence, the property that they are building a house is actually right there where the label is for the 25-foot greenbelt buffer. So, we have that fence proposed along there in addition to the opaque vegetation. And then the design, looking at the preliminary design of the grading, lots 50 through 53 will be 10 foot lower than the existing grade there. So, the, we'll have a max, a max height of 16 feet. Most campers are 13 feet or less, so they should not be able to see those campers unless they stand on a ladder at that fence and look over it. One of the other questions we were had in the neighborhood meeting was concern over conduct and events happening on the, on the site. So, what we did was we put together a booklet, which you have in your information there, of different, of, of a whole set of rules that will be a minimum set of rules for the site. A few of, a few of them that we put here, one of the concerns was about when, when are lights off? So, there'll be a quiet time from 10 to 7 that'll be required and upheld. No one's allowed, any campers are not allowed off of the property. They are to stay within the property. If anybody violates any of these rules, they'll be asked to move, to leave. One of the other requirements, and we've seen this on a lot of campgrounds, is the campers cannot be older than 10 years old. And with that, just by default, you're, you're going to, you're going to see a nicer set of campers that are there, that, and, and that's, whenever you, whenever you check in, you'll go have to actually provide a registration and, and like we said, it has to be DOT worthy. So, that, at that point, that's when we would check to see, you know, whether or not it meets the requirements of the campsite. No excessive belongings or, are allowed on the campsites, as I spoke about before, with no permanent, permanent structures allowed. So, so with that, I want to leave you with, like I said, we're asking for 80 RV campsites, 50 by 75, with internal roads 24-foot. The purpose in this site is to use the lake that's there as an amenity. There was a lot of questions from the, from the neighbors about, you know, were these people just passing through, but are transient, which yes, that is the definition of RV park, but this site offers, much like the other one that I had prepared with the river, it offers a destination and a, you know, a, more to the site internally than just staying there and, and using the local attractions. So, with that, I'd like to answer any questions y'all may have. One other thing, I'm not sure about the testing of the lake, but if, if it's, if it's the pleasure of the board, we could add that as a condition into it, you know, just to ensure safety, because, I mean, like I said, that's not a, that's not a big deal, but it's not a requirement that I know of.
Okay. Because you're going to allow swimming, right? That was listed on there?
Yes, because there'll be kayaking and inadvertently somebody will.
And you're wanting to change from pond to lake to make it sound bigger, more enticing?
You talking about Swan Lake?
Yeah.
Just honestly, the, the owner just liked the name of it.
Okay.
Question from Mr. Blakely. Commissioner Carver?
No questions.
Commissioner Lovett?
No, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Connect? Any other questions? Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, because if the owner's coming up here, I think that mine are all directed at him.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yeah, you mentioned a second home site. You're going to build one and, and you're counting the existing one as well?
No, no, the existing one will be removed. It's actually where the, where the ship store will be located.
So, you'll be building two new ones?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, sir. Have you done this type of development in the past?
Yes.
And do you still own those?
Oh, well, the client, yeah, see, I'll let him answer those questions. Yeah, he did, we actually submitted la, was it last year? Cape Fear Campground. And then he has owned and operated a campground at the beach, so he's very familiar with it. But I'll let him answer those questions if that's, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
No other questions from Mr. Blakely?
Thank you all again.
I do have a list of names here, if I can, anyone else for, wish to speak on behalf of this project? Please, come on up for. We will need you to state your name and your address, please.
I am Vaughn King, 716 New Eland Church Road. Okay, any questions for me?
Commissioner Sharp?
I mean, are you, are you the owner he was referring to? Yes, yeah. Well, I don't know if you heard my question, but how many developments have you done in the past like this?
Uh, my- Uh, I did, uh, Ocean Marina in Carolina Beach. So it's similar to a campground, but it is a marina. So you have daily transients, you have people who stay monthly, things like that, and the same at, uh, Barefoot Landing Marina in South Carolina. And then I did one in, uh, it's called Lake Lehman, towards Wilmington.
I guess I'm asking, do you own them?
No, I've sold all of them.
Okay, that's what I'm...
Commissioner Reeves. Commissioner Warbick.
So you're the one living, gonna be living on this one, so you're not selling this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I guess, one of the questions I have is list on, I'm going on the questions that was sent to you or sent to someone and they responded back. So there's like five of them that they've asked you questions and your responses or the response given for you is the owner has not decided at this time. But yet, in the beginning of these, it says, you know, would you like a place to stay for a few days or a few months? You're, it's gonna be up to your discretion on their demeanor and how their conduct is. So you have, you know exactly what you're looking for for that, but you don't know if you're gonna be tracking each person renting a site, if your signs are gonna be in English or Spanish. It seems there's a few more questions up in the air and you're, I don't know, kinda, I don't know how you're gonna judge people coming in based on their demeanor and their setup when you haven't kind of finalized, if you've done three or four or five other projects, seems like there's still some gray area in what you're trying to do.
I'm not sure I totally understand, but like a demeanor, I, I'm not sure about that, but I know I'm gonna live there and we're gonna run it.
Well, so it says, it says the owner is committed to make sure that the site does not become a place for low-income housing, but rather a place for vacationers and guests that are traveling around the state country and would like a place to stay for a few days or months at a time, if their demeanor and setup fits the standard of the campground. Second one, this is up to the discretion of the owner when asked how long the stays are gonna be between the year they're allowed to stay. Says if a guest has exceptional demeanor and conduct, then the owner reserves the right to extend the site of the stay.
Okay, I think that's fair. What, I guess what that is, if somebody's not gonna abide by the rules that we set forth, then I, we're gonna ask them to leave, if they don't abide by the rules.
That's why I was gonna tell you, that's why we had the rules in place, was to answer those questions.
Okay.
That's why we're setting those rules in place.
Yeah, but some of, I mean, I mean, I, I understand that part, it's just some of the other things that you haven't quite decided on this time are kind of, I mean, they're kind of big ones, um, as far as background checks, um...
Well, background checks, like take for instance, whenever you rent a hotel room or, uh, or a condo, they don't typically do have background checks for rentals. Now, if you're gonna do a long-term rental, uh, I mean, we could add that in the conditions. Though, those questions were posed by, they were worried about the conduct of people being on site.
Agreed, yeah.
So we didn't, we didn't know, we haven't had that, uh, brought up before, so we were just trying to leave it generic because we've gotta figure out what works for them. You can't do background checks on everybody that rents a site.
Okay.
And that's, and I didn't, I mean, that was too vague. I apologize for us responding that way, but...
Okay. 'Cause I think one of the biggest ones that I would assume that they're also concerned about is if you're allowed to stay up to a year, how a lot, how, I mean, do you move away for a day since RVs are conveniently allowed to move and able to move and then you come back for a year?
Right. Uh, we, I mean, we can uphold that, you know, the, I don't know how you set a timeframe. I mean...
You set one.
Well, we could set one, I mean, that's up to him, that, I mean, that's up to you, how you wanna operate.
I would say if they're a good tenant and they abide by the rules, if, I would say, do another year.
But do you see how it's starting?
If they're, if they're good.
Agreed, but do you see how it's starting to move from RV park to...
Permit, I see what you're saying, I see what you're asking.
'Cause I mean, most leases you sign are 12 months, so 12 months is a year, so you're moving into from an RV park where people are coming and going into, this is gonna be their home.
Well, what we could do to eliminate it is, uh, like move out for a month, and if they come back within the, you know, the month, then they can rent, uh, and then that would eliminate, 'cause you wouldn't have somewhere just to go for a month and come back. Would that, would that be satisf- I mean, what do y'all, what do y'all think? We're just kinda...
Well, I don't know how anybody would be able to police that anyways.
Say that again, I'm...
I don't know how anybody could, uh, police that anyway, so I don't know.
Right.
Point to it, you know?
Right, one way or the other, yes, sir.
You know, you sign another year lease, there's no way of us knowing whether or not they were there to begin with.
Right.
Um, and then I guess going back to the lake thing, um, with people putting their heads underwater and stuff, and if it's not been used for 12 years, right? Something along those lines? I don't know, just, if you've got kids swimming in there, probably don't wanna suck up a deadly amoeba or something.
I mean, we would definitely add a condition to, to, to it, that's my big issue. Same thing, how do we, what do we do? Do we report that to y'all, or do we, how do we, do we report that to the health department?
That's a great question, I, yeah, I do not know.
I'm not saying he won't do it, I'm just saying, how do we prove it, is what, it's more how do we prove it, not how do we police it?
Yeah.
Same, same thing with the rentals, same.
I'm, I'm gonna take a stab, it's probably the Department of Environmental Quality will check the water quality, 'cause they often do it at Jordan Lake and the swimming areas there, so it's...
Yeah, they do.
Something to be researched.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Commissioner...
Good questions, thank you.
Commissioner Connect.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levitt?
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
No questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for? Speak on behalf for? Yes, sir, come forward, please state your name as well as your address.
My name is Scott McAllister, I'm 2008 North Plank Road. I've been in, uh, North Carolina since 1989, moved to Sanford in 2006. So the older I get, the more, uh, friends I have that have these RVs and travel, and so I've had, uh, experience over the last couple of years and with people coming down to see me. Originally, I'm from Oklahoma, and, uh, there's a definite need for this kind of facility. Right now, my friends that come, go to Lake Jordan and stay at the campground there, and, uh, we kinda meet halfway and shop in Apex or wherever. But, uh, anyway, that, that revenue should, should be going to Sanford if we can, uh, this thing turns out like it, it looks like it's gonna turn out. It's beautiful property, I've been out there myself, and, uh, I don't think there's any, any problem with the lake, I know there's fish in it and, uh, but anyway, it's just a, a beautiful place and, uh, it's good, clean revenue for our, our county. I just think it's a win-win for everybody. My friends come to play golf, shop, their wives shop, and anyway, that's my opinion of it, but, uh, anyway, that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else for? Anyone opposed, please come forward. Please state your name as well as your address.
I'm John Kirkman, 4465 Swan Station Road. Uh, I have been a resident, uh, near Morris's Pond for about 20 years now, my wife has lived in the property there, uh, for approximately 40 years. When I look at it, it has always been a residential agricultural community. There is no commercial development in that area until you get down to 87. So the rezoning request to me would be totally, uh, against how it's zoned currently now and also with the zoning plan that Lee County has, that is not consistent, uh, with the zoning, uh, because it's RA, um, and there are single-family residents there now, there is no commercial development. Uh, I am concerned about some of the safety issues. The road is highly traveled, uh, with trucks traveling from, uh, 87 to Martin Marietta, uh, to get sand and weak sand, to get sand and gravel. So, uh, there's often, uh, times during the day, high, high count of traffic on that road, uh, which I think it'd be hazardous for RVs turning into and out of that property and accessing it where it is, particularly in relationship to the bridge there, uh, off of Morris's Pond. I have some environmental concern issues, uh, there is resident, excuse me, there's agricultural, uh, farms around that, I can tell you that there are cows that have pastures, and I'm sure that the, uh, waste from those cattle leeches into and runs into part of Morris's Pond, so I don't know that I would necessarily want to be swimming in it myself, might be good for fish, uh, but I don't know how good it would be for, for that. The other thing too is, uh, the developer indicated that he had a meeting for those that had adjacent property and they had a meeting. We're adjacent but do not adjacent to it. I, I was not made aware of that meeting, uh, until after the meeting had occurred, uh, and did not know that this property was under consideration for this development until the signs were posted for the public hearing. We try to be good neighbors, I would want them to be good neighbors too, and have a level of transparency about what they're trying to do in developing this property, as it relates to that. I could give you other issues that I have with it, uh, I think we need to look long and hard. I, I do support commercial development and think it's as important as our commen- uh, county grows, however, it needs to be done in the right way, in the right place, and consistent with the rules and regulations, uh, that the county has as far as ordinances are concerned and development is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name as well as your address.
Hi, everyone, I'm Heather Moore, I'm at 4029 Swan Station Road. And my husband and I, we are currently building a custom home adjacent to this proposed development, and I can definitively say, we would've never sold our home in South Point, uh, in the Durham area, to come back to a hometown that we love and invest such a significant amount of money to build our dream home if we knew that we'd be living beside, uh, you know, an RV park of all things. And we're truly concerned about the potential negative impacts of this type of development in an area that's deemed residential countryside. You know, our greatest concern is around the safety and security and the fact that RV parks, whether they are, you know, offer short-term and or long-term, they do attract a very nature, uh, transient population that has no real connection to our community. I specifically asked the development, as noted previously, and the design team, about whether background checks would be put in place for at least long-term renters. I also asked whether sex offenders would be permitted to rent within the park, and they were not prepared to address either of those concerns at that time. Uh, there's also the environmental impact to the surrounding area due to habitat destruction, soil erosion and water contamination. RV parks require a significant amount of water, which can put a strain on our local water resources, and all of that wastewater coming from 80 camp sites in that area, if not properly treated and disposed, would contaminate the surrounding water sources. We have a pond on our family land that is connectly, uh, connected directly to Morris Pond on the proposed site, as do other neighbors who are here tonight. And that doesn't include just small ponds on the private land, uh, on Swan Station, that also includes a connection to Carolina Trace. Traffic, as Mr. Kirkman has already addressed, traffic safety is already a concern due to the significant amount of traffic that flows in between 87 and US1, including those dump trucks going to Martin Marietta, uh, from the quarry. There's also a concern around, uh, you know, the impact on property values, and some people wanting to sell their homes proa- uh, proactively before the development gets started. We also can question how an RV park in a countryside of Lee County will result in having a more positive impact than a negative one. I mean, sure, if Sanford was a lo- a vacation destination or even located off of I-95 where vacationers could stop on their way to the Outer Banks or various tourist sites up and down the coast, we could see the benefit of tourism dollars that would be spent, but that's not our current situation here. And finally, you know, we understand that the developer has a vision to make this park higher-end, but no matter how you market or brand something like renaming Morris Pond to Swanee Lake, or branding an RV park as an RV resort, um, you know, the key, location is the key to attracting types of, the types of individuals that we'd all want visiting and living in our community, and we just find it very difficult to believe that this RV park won't end up becoming a desired location for single individuals needing alternative housing solutions off radar and for contractors working outside of Lee County on major projects. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please. Please state your name as well as your address for the record.
Uh, yes, good evening, uh, my name is Ed Washburn, 4180 Swan Station Road here in Sanford. Our, uh, location is directly across the street from the, uh, proposed campsite. Unlike John, you know, that's been here for, uh, multiple years and lived in this area, uh, we retired and decided to come to North Carolina, and we looked at many locations here in the state and landed here in Lee County, Sanford, and we're happy that we did. We're at a great location, we had a house built, and the reason that we picked this location is because it's away from commercial and business-type places, but still close enough where we can get our shopping and, uh, visit restaurants and things like that in Sanford, and... With it being zoned as a residential and agricultural area, we would like to see it stay that way. Another key thing for us on our location is that we have great neighbors, but we're not right on top of them, and, uh, we would like to keep it that way. It's, it's quiet for the most part, I know it's a, Swan Station Road is very busy during the day with a lot of, uh, trucks going back and forth from the sand pits. Other than that, it's a very quiet, we feel very safe and secure there, and we would like to keep it that way. We're concerned, as Heather just said, that there may be a lot of transients coming in and out, and people, one of our concerns also is that people would go in there and park for a long period of time. When they were speaking earlier about the rules, one of the questions that I would have is how these rules, who is gonna be there to enforce these rules? Is there gonna be somebody there 24 hours a day to make sure that the people that would live there, uh, would abide by the rules? And also, also the length of stay. As a, um, they're calling this an RV resort, to me, that sounds like, uh, people would come in, stay a few days, and then move on to their next destination. So like I said, we're, we feel very safe and secure, we wanna keep it that way, and we, um, value the commissioners allowing us to come up here and state our opinions on this. My wife and I are against this, and we request that, um, you hear what we say, and we just, uh, would like to see the rezoning request, uh, from this company denied. One other thing that I might add, and I, and I went on the website and I read what the core values are for our county commissioners, and the first one is that you value our citizens, our community and our families, and, um, we thank you for that, and we thank you for this opportunity to, to be able to come here this evening and talk with you about it.
Thank you, sir. Next for, against, please. Again, state your name as well as your address.
Yes, I'm Dennis K. Our residence is at 4188 Swan Station Road, uh, again, directly across from the proposed site. When we first built our, our house, it was built in 2021, we built that as a, a retirement home, I'm getting ready to retire from the military here in about a year. We picked this location mainly due to the countryside and, you know, rural living, I'm looking forward to get to that when I retire. Being able to enjoy, you know, the peace and quiet and, uh, you know, kinda do, um, residential agricultural type, type items. And according to the info on the Lee County website, the long-term goal is as countryside. I'm not seeing this development in, uh... It doesn't fall within this designation of protecting the land, 'cause they're gonna have to clearcut it to develop it up as they're... they're seeing it being used. But another main concern I have is the property values would be significantly decreased due to having commercial property directly across the street or surrounding the other residents. Waste management was another big concern. Even with having pump stations, I'm not seeing how the chemicals used in RVs would be easily mitigated without a water treatment plant. And then if it does get into the lake, that would contaminate not only our land, but surrounding properties and potentially Lake Trace. Much like the other residents we've talked about, the road is very busy. We get a lot of traffic going through there. It's kind of hit or miss a couple of times with getting hit with big construction vehicles. Another concern was the undetermined longevity of the tenant's duration and who the RV resort will be marketed to. We haven't really got any clarification from the developer on that. And there's really not a whole lot of supporting vacation destinations aside maybe from Pinehurst and some golfing. The rules package was also provided via email. The only issue I found with that was that the owner could change those at any time without notification. And then the rules were not agreed upon by any of the residents, to my knowledge. That's all I have for you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name as well as your address.
My name is Brian Richards. I live at 12 De Paulme, Sanford. I'm not necessarily here to speak for or against, maybe against as it stands now. I know many of staff know me well, that as part of conditional zoning, it could be asked to place some stormwater management controls on the property. Very concerned about sediment runoff and water quantity runoff, particularly as it feeds into Lake Trace. Already have enough problems in Lake Trace as it is with sediment buildup as you drive by Trace. Now you can start to see it turning into more of a pond than a lake. And that would be, I think, a very reasonable thing to request with something like this, especially if they're going to have gravel drives and runoff from RVs. I think that's something we really need to address as a, as a county, as a city as a whole, is stormwater controls and water quality and quantity. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next individual, for or against? Please state your name as well as your address, ma'am.
My name's Kathy Tobias, and I live at 3926 Swan Station Road. And we own a small farm near the proposed site. And I wanted to say that I'm against the site for all the reasons that everyone else already listed. And I was wondering if the, I did have a question, if the owner ever lived at the developments that he sold prior to this one. Thank you.
Mr. Vaughn, would you like to answer that question for the benefit of everyone here?
The answer is yes. Ocean Marina in Carolina Beach, when I did that, I should have lived on-site, and I had a second house in the marina. So, yeah, for two years.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for or against? Please state your name as well as your address.
My name is Julie Williams. I'm at 3942 Swan Station Road. Just like the gentleman at the very beginning, we, I am four tenths of a mile from this proposed location. We were not included in any kind of notifications or anything of that nature if it weren't for the power of social media. Monday before last, I would not have known about this meeting today. The land use signs went up. I did make a phone call to kind of find out from there. I do have concerns with the proposal of the RV site, one being that the long-term goals of the Swan Station area is for it to be a resident, a residential agricultural district. I do think that putting an RV park out here is probably not, doesn't fit any of those guidelines. I don't know how familiar commissioners are with the Swan Station Road area, but there's not a whole lot to see out there. It's pretty country. The only thing that is between 87 and US-1 is a family dollar. There's not a whole lot there. That is the main purpose as to why my husband and I moved out there. Like everyone else has said, we moved out there for the small-town feel, the country feel. I would like to keep it that way if possible. We've lived there for four years this month. I do think, had we known the plans for this RV park, I probably wouldn't have moved out there, like others have said. But I did just want to include myself as one of those people that had not been included in any kind of proposals or any kind of meetings as well. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for or against?
I do have a petition for this. Just wondered if I, if the commissioners would like that, or when we have to have that to...
If you, if you could make a copy of that for all of us, or can we get a copy, Madam Clark? Are there names and addresses on there?
There is.
Okay. If you want to present it, we can take it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I was just going to answer some of the questions that the board would like for me to do that. One of the questions, one of the concerns was about traffic. And when we made the submittal for the conditional zoning, a TRC was required. NC DOT was included on that submittal. No, no roadway improvements were seen at the time required. The truck, current traffic counts out there on Swan Station are 4,600 cars per day, and the road is a 20-foot road section, which allows a 12,000 cars per day. So it's not meeting, it's not even half of its capacity yet. But now, when you're out there, it's going to seem like a lot of vehicles because you're getting them at peak hours. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is, and Amy can correct me if I'm wrong, but this use is allowed with a special use or conditional use under the RA zoning. So we're not asking for abstract use. It is allowed, but it requires conditions, which is what we are doing here with adding conditions and asking for, for you and the neighbors, what, what, what can they live with? What do we need to add to it to make the project work, make the project viable? The other question was about the chemicals and the sewer, the septic. RV parks require pre-treatment. So it's a very expensive pre-treatment system that'll have to be put in place prior to the pump station. And then, I wouldn't drink it, but the people that design it say you could drink it out of the back of it. But I, I told them, I wanted to see them take a cup and drink it if they think it's that clean. But, like I said, it, it will be, once it goes through that pre-treatment and the pump station, it'll be just gray water going into the septic system. And all of that's got to meet the county and state requirements for a system. So, we're not just dumping out there. The other concern is stormwater runoff. Like I said, we, we are only designed, we've only designed this to impact, to impact 30% of the site. The rest of it will be left wooded. We tried to compact the site together so that we could lessen the impact and provide additional amenities. The same reason that these people had bought land and moved out there to the country, want to keep that country feel, but we're clustering it together in, in a site and sta, and leaving the rest of it natural as possible, including the lake and the wooded area at the rear. Any additional questions that I may have missed?
Any other question? Commissioner Reeves?
I'm just curious if, for example, a person stays up to the, what, 10, 11 months, and it's time for them to leave, if that same unit comes back with a different person, does that have any impact or bearing?
Well, we could do it based on the registration of the vehicle. And that might be something that we add to the rules, is whoever is renting, that vehicle has to be registered in their name, or they have to have a lease contract.
Right.
You know, if you, if you lease a, lease it. I mean, we could, the point in this, I mean, I know that there's a lot of concern about how long somebody stays, like they're, the questions are out of both sides. It's like, well, they're just going to be here a day and then leave, but then we're worried if they stay 10 months. That person that stays 10 months would be, I mean, I wouldn't go commit a crime right next to where I'm staying. Because, I mean, you're obviously going to track it right back to that person. I mean, these people, their information will be on the site. I'd say it's more dangerous to go to Walmart in Sanford than this campsite would ever be. Because, like I said, if this, the development of this property, we're talking about over a million dollars in land cost. Then you're talking about a million dollars in development cost, including the sewer and all the infrastructure. So, if you're going to put this kind of investment in it, you're going to make it nice, and you're going to make it go. And the only way to make this, this project nice is to put all these amenities in there, put these rules in there, and keep it as a valued benefit to the county. I mean, and I know, it's very unfortunate that we're as close to those residential houses. We can't change where the sites are because of where the septic field is. If we could have pushed it further to the back, we would have done that. But we want, we're willing to put in vegetation over and above what's required in the, in the UDO to protect those neighbors. And we were willing to, you know, talk with the neighbors and, and try to get their concerns, try to, you know, put those in there. And some of the stuff that we answered vaguely is, you know, sometimes the client doesn't want to necessarily tie everything in it because he's not sure what he wants to do. So, we apologize for the vagueness in those, those answers. One of the other points I wanted to make, and it just slipped my mind. I don't remember what it was.
Actually, I was trying, I was waiting on the answer on my question.
Yeah.
What, what I'm saying to you, if you're driving an RV, and I stay there for 10 months, and I leave, and I let somebody else drive the RV and come right back.
Right.
Technically, I've found myself a home, because all I'm doing is changing the driver.
Well, that's what I was saying about the, whoever the renter is, would have to match, the registration of the RV would have to match them.
All right.
Or they would have to have a, a lease agreement. If they, because, I mean, people do lease, lease RVs. They would have to have a lease agreement stating them as the leasing.
All right.
I'm sorry, I, I said it, but I ran straight. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Blakely? Thank you, sir.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Anyone else for or against? Going once, going twice. That closes the public hearing for the rezoning of the property on Swan Station Road. We will now allow the planning board to convene, and if we can take a 10-minute break. Yes, and the residents and the folks that were participating in the for and against, you're more than welcome to attend the planning board's meeting. You are not allowed to intervene or ask questions. You can watch and sit in on the deliberation of the planning board. And Ms. Amy will know where to go. All right, our ten minutes are up, and I appreciate the opportunity to take a break. Please, we will continue on with the agenda under... Oh, excuse me. Public comments. Public comments. First one on the list for public comments is John Pascal, Bread of Life Ministries. Mr. Pascal, if you'd be so kind as to state your name and your address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm John Pascal, and the Bread of Life address is 219 Maple Avenue.
And just a reminder, you do have three minutes.
Okay. I really appreciate being able to come here and talk to the Board of Commissioners. We thank you for the support you've given us in the past, and just want to let you know, Bread of Life, I've given you a little packet for you to look at later on. It's got a little pamphlet that tells you about it. I also attached what we've done in the last... In 2022, so I won't go over that. We've had our 501(c)(3) since 2012. We have our solicitation license from the state of North Carolina. We're part of the S3. In 2017, a group was formed called S3 Connect, and we've been in part of that since the inception of that. You know, all of y'all... All of you know Bread of Life is in the Old McKeever School. It was certainly a county school for a long, long time, and then it was put up, I think, maybe for auctioning. Somebody bought it, and then... And we rented that space, auditorium space there, for a little bit, and then the person that bought it actually gifted it to us. So the Bread of Life owns that building, the Old McKeever School, and so we're trying our best to make good use of it. You know, during the... For the homeless count, they call it a point-in-time count, when they made a map of where the homeless people were, Bread of Life Building, the Old McKeever School, was right kinda in the center of it, of that space. And so what we've tried to do at the Bread of Life is to make our space available to folks and try to help them. We have... Our funding partners are certainly churches and private donors. When we first started with S3, the city was very much involved with our... Everything that we did and tried to look and see how to help homeless people. They've been a partner with us, the city of Sanford. They have helped us greatly. They marshaled some funds, was able to help us. You know, we have air conditioning in our building now, in that auditorium. We have a shower for people to take showers. We have a washing and dryer for people to wash clothes. And I'm glad to say, right now, the Bread of Life is being used seven days a week. That Old McKeever School is being used seven days a week. We signed an agreement with Salvation Army. We have a memorandum of understanding, and they run a navigation center in the Bread of Life Building. And they run that Monday through Friday from nine to two. They serve a breakfast there, and they do exactly what the word says, navigate. They try to help people, homeless people, find help. And that's what we're... That's our goal, and that's the goal of the S3 group, too, that you'll hear more about. I know you know about the S3 group, but you'll hear more about that. Our expenses are going up. We have...
Time, sir.
Time?
Yes, sir.
Time?
Three minutes.
Well, I just want to say, whenever y'all come up with your process for nonprofits to apply for funding, we certainly want to be included. If there's a packet that you mail out, we would like to get that packet so we can apply for any funds that the county might have to help nonprofits, to help our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have Thomas Beck, but I believe he put his name on the wrong list because he was a rezoning request. Ruth Price? Please state your name as well as your address, and you do have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Ruth Price, and my home address is 2714 Bel Air Drive. I'm the vice chair of S3 Housing Connect. And if you're familiar with S3, you know that we consist of a network of nonprofit agencies working together to address the needs of the homeless population in Lee County. I want to read our mission statement to you. S3 Housing Connect seeks to bring together the needed resources to create a coordinated approach to ensure that homelessness is a rare, brief, and nonrecurring experience. The three S's in S3 indicate our efforts to provide shelter, services, and stability. That's for our Lee County population who are either homeless or at risk of losing their shelter. I need you to hear me when I say that not only are these agencies working for the homeless people who you see downtown, living in cars in local parking lots, or living in wooded areas in various places in this county. These agencies are also working with families, senior citizens, veterans, and others who are in a shelter or in a home, but still have concerns that they'll be evicted or have to move out for other reasons. As a concerned citizen in Lee County, and I'm not affiliated with any of the agencies in the network, I want you to understand that I've seen many human beings having different heartbreaking stories for being homeless. In addition to the care, expertise, and devotion of these people with these agencies who are volunteering with the S3, they do phenomenal work. They meet together, they work together, they troubleshoot together in order to minimize the needs of each individual. Their collaborative efforts have resulted in success stories for single-parent families, for the veterans, for reuniting long-lost family members, and for young adults who have trouble paying tuition and materials for education and obviously can't afford a home. In addition, the S3 system agencies have done excellent work in recruiting support from local churches and support groups. An example is there are at least 25 churches already involved in supporting the Bread of Life Outreach Mission, Habitat for Humanity, the Salvation Army. All of them are in the S3 group. We have a representative of a few of our agencies here, one being Mr. Pascal, to share their efforts with you tonight. As you hear about some of their work and maybe a few success stories, remember that they need your support as well to continue their service and make Lee County a respected and inviting community for families and businesses. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, ma'am. I have lines on here that show Cindy Hall going before Laura Spivey. Again, please state your address as well, and you do have three minutes.
Cindy Hall, 1202 Wilkins Drive. I wanted to say that I've lived in Chicago and Minnesota, and I'm just really impressed by Lee County. I think it's the best place to live, and I really appreciate its concern for its fellow citizens. I'm speaking as a volunteer with H3, which is Health Healing and Hope, and we do a street outreach, a medical, where we do three to four clinics a week. And so through the week, I have contact with approximately 60 different people experiencing homelessness or poverty on a weekly basis. I'm also a committee leader for S3, which Ruth has alluded to, and this group is so neat because it pulls all the different agencies together, and we don't duplicate each other. We work together to try to help this population. Daily, I get calls or see about needs in our community: housing, food, physical, mental health resources, drug addiction, even human trafficking. It could be really, really depressing and get us down, but what keeps that from happening is I know that all these other agencies are behind me and have my back if I need to call on them. We're all willing to work together to make Lee County a better place. For example, just today, I received a call from an attorney who had found an older couple in their 60s living in a car. They had lost their place to live. He has health problems, and after talking with his attorney, I was able to give them several options, including the Lee County enrichment center to get some help, the navigation center from the Salvation Army, and also the Outreach Mission. Tomorrow, we're going to meet them at the navigation center to assess their medical needs and give them whatever help that we can. I'm just really thankful to be part of the S3 organization because it's a large caring network that really works together. The other thing I wanted to tell you is that you might... Some of you might know that I've led the Lee County Point-in-Time Count for the last five years, and this year was a little different. We reached out and helped the other eight counties in our region, and they have said that Lee County is the model that they are all striving for. This year, the state allowed us to count ahead of time and then go out on January 25th for a final sweep through the city. We're not quite finished with our stats, so I can't share with you age, race, and gender yet, but I wanted to let you know that our numbers have increased, and it was up to 159. That includes rough sleepers...
Times.
...and those in shelters. I want to invite you sometime to come and visit us. You can come to a clinic with us or come to the navigation center, and we would love to have you share in this wonderful opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Gabriella Saunders, 223...
My mic, what? I'm sorry.
Gabriella Saunders, 223 Wicker Street. Good evening, Commissioners. I would first like to say thank you for allowing the S3 Housing Connect and myself, on behalf of Veteran Nation, the opportunity to speak tonight. First, I would like to speak about our nonprofit organization, Veteran Nation. As I stated, we are a nonprofit organization established in 2019. Our focus is on veterans through outreach, education, and advocacy, with the emphasis on homelessness, housing, nutrition, healthcare, with the collaboration of many organizations within the S3 Housing Connect. I would like to note that one key point that separates our organization from other veteran organizations is our organization's open to any veteran, regardless of their discharge type from the military. Furthermore, I would like to elaborate more on the 2017 through 2021 census count for veterans in Lee County. In total, there were roughly 4,000 veterans reported, with 16% of those being unemployed and with only having a high school diploma. Within this demographic, some of the veteran issues that we have seen since our establishment are as follows. Veteran homelessness discovered through street outreach in the navigation center, as many people have mentioned already. Lack of resources for veterans. We are in need of more veteran peer support specialists. We are in need of a mobile veteran benefits clinic. We are entitled... Or, sorry, we are also in need of a veteran clinic that helps with benefits, entitlements, and counseling on-spot and out in the community, along with an additional veteran service officer at the enrichment center, as we only have two that serve the entire county. And number three, a lack of affordable and consistent transportation to and from medical appointments at the Veteran Affairs Office to include their community care appointments for our veterans in need. Commissioners, in speaking about the needs of our veterans, I would like to state what we, Veteran Nation, have done to date. Today, we have provided mental health training and first aid training to our community advocates. We have launched a community mobile shower that we use in the community that is open to anyone in need of a shower. We have opened a supportive housing program for veterans who are underserved and underrepresented, and they are allowed to reside within our residence up to 24 months. Correction, up to 12 months. One of our success stories I would like to point out is after we located a female veteran living in the woods in a park here in Lee County, we successfully integrated her from the Lee County jail into an extensive inpatient rehab facility where she would reside for 24 months, where she would receive extensive treatment for her PTSD and trauma incurred from her time in the Army. This was all within six months of here in Lee County. In closing, I ask that moving forward, you take the time to think about what more can be done for our veterans and how we can collectively support them in ensuring... in ensuring their needs are met. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hamer Carter? And again, state your name, address, as well. You have three minutes, sir.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Hamer Carter. I reside at 831 South Franklin Drive here in Sanford. I come tonight as the president of the Board of Outreach Mission to basically update the board a little bit. OMI is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that has operated two emergency shelters in Sanford since 1988. 1988, that's a long time. In 2017, OMI joined the S3 Housing Connect Task Force with the vision of ending homelessness in Lee County. The collaboration of the task force aligned the participating nonprofits to focus on what they did best. In other words, OMI, you do shelter. We'll focus on shelter. Don't focus on being a thrift store or focus on being a food pantry. Do what you do best and collaborate with the folks who do food shelter, who do food pantry, and do clothing. Okay? And collaborate and make the most of your efforts. It was during this time that OMI was able to become a low-barrier shelter and open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. A leap of faith that OMI took and basically depended on our partners to help us. Due to the support of our partner agencies, OMI never closed during the pandemic. And we even expanded our services to try and fulfill the need of the homeless community. We received over $550,000 in COVID funding, and we spent every dollar as effectively as we could. We used it to serve over 1,200 homeless clients during the pandemic. We had collaborations with our S3 partners. We worked with H3 to procure a much-needed blood analyzer that helps them in their examinations of the homeless, and also to secure a mobile clinic, which will be coming onboard here very shortly, hopefully around the first of the month, that allows us to reach outside of the city of Sanford. Excuse me. Our collaborations during that time period and the use of the COVID-19 funding not only helped H3, but it allowed us to collaborate with the Bread of Life to ensure that the adverse weather shelter could operate in 2021, and also with the Salvation Army to ensure that we could kick off the Navigation Center and get it started on the right foot. These same and other S3 Housing Connect collaborations will continue as OMI starts construction of the Samuel J. Wernham Community Shelter this year. I'll take just a second to say thanks to the Board of Commissioners. The funding that you gave us allowed us to manipulate that money into $2.5 million toward building this new shelter. So we're very close. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Dr. William Hall? And again, sir, please state your address as well as you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Dr. William Hall. I live at 1202 Wilkins Drive in Sanford. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. After retiring with, after 33 years of family practice in Sanford, I became interested in helping those experiencing homelessness and their lack of medical care. In the fall of 2018, I went to the S3 Task Force with a proposal of offering free medical care to those experiencing homelessness in Lee County. After an overwhelming affirmation, my wife and I formed H3, Health Healing Hope, a nonprofit to provide free medical care to the homeless. H3 started seeing patients in January of 2019, and since then, H3 has seen over 750 different patients. In 2022, we served 1,300 patient visits. We have three to four clinics each week at various places in Lee County and average about 20 patient visits each time our clinics are open. H3 works with and relies on input from S3 Task Force, help with housing, shelter, psych referrals, among other things. H3 relies on the expertise of nonprofit and government agency members of S3 to help with patients' needs, as S3 relies on H3 to refer patients for medical needs. We have many, many success stories. Let me give you just one. MG moved here from Myrtle Beach after being discharged from a hospital there with congestive heart failure two years ago. She was homeless. H3 has been meeting her medical needs, but also Salvation Army, housing agencies, OMI have all helped to provide shelter and support, and sometimes food. She now has her own apartment and is looking for a job. S3 Task Force has been functioning since 2017, working together to end homelessness in Lee County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next is Laura Spivey. And again, state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Laura Spivey. I live at 1708 Pendergrass Road in Sanford, and I have been a resident of Lee County for my entire life. I turned 50 this year, and now I am the brand-new, first-ever executive director of Outreach Mission Incorporated. There is an African proverb that states, "If you want to go far, or if you want to go fast, go alone. But if you want to go far, go together." And as you've heard with all of these other agencies tonight, the S3 Task Force that was formed by the city of Sanford and the county and has been supported by the city and the county for five or six years now, has allowed all of us to come to the table, to collaborate, to help end or help move towards ending the cycle of homelessness for all these folks in Sanford and Lee County. If we didn't have the support of the city of Sanford and Lee County, none of us would be able to do what we do. We wouldn't have the ability to build a brand-new shelter that will be coming online next year. We wouldn't have a medical doctor who goes out and works endless hours to help people that have no medical help without him. We have the Salvation Army that spends every single day of the week feeding and helping the homeless. We have all come to the table, Veteran Nation. I mean, let me just tell you, let me just tell you, all of our partners. H3 Housing, H3 Ministry, Daymark Recovery, Helping Hands Clinic, Sand Hills Crisis, Sand Hills Peer Support, CCH, Advanced Behavioral Clinic, Enrichment Center, Pregnancy Crisis Center, Johnson Lee Harnett Community Action, Brick Capital CDC, Lee County Schools, Dr. Waller. She comes to all of our meetings and tells us how many McKinnney-Vento homeless children we have in Lee County. The Salvation Army, NC Works, Jobseekers, Total Package Reentry, the folks that have just gotten out of prison. Where do they come if they're homeless? They come to OMI. Local employers, local realtors, United Way, Habitat for Humanity, PTO thrift stores, Colts, Haven. We all have come to the table so that we can end this cycle, so that we can make Lee County one of the first places probably in the whole United States that has the lowest amount of homeless folks. We're all extremely passionate about it. We want to go far. We are going far. We keep going far. We're asking you guys, if there's any possible way, any funding available, please give it to S3 Housing Connect Partners. Consider it, because it's only going to move us farther in our purposes to help the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is under Old Business is Tax Administrator, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Chair, could I have a point of privilege real quick?
Sir.
Could someone tell me what our policy is for nonprofits, whether it be the clerk, our council, county manager? Because over the events of the past two or three months, I'm not sure myself what our policy is. Anybody, tell me.
Well, there are a couple of different things, Commissioner Sharp. We have or had an annual process that went through the annual budget. Last year, the board capped the funding at, I believe it was $73,500. And so based on that cap, at the last meeting, we recommended to the board that they not take any more applications on the annual money. Well over a year ago, at a budget retreat, we talked with the board about ARP funding that we had, and it was discussed that we would give money to nonprofits that approached us, and the board decided to give money too. So there was really no policy set up. We would just take it as they came to us. And so the first two were OMI and then Brick Capital, CDC, then Life Springs. So that's really how we got to where we are today. So I don't know that that answers your question, but...
That answers part of it, but in the past, I remember hearing something about we put a $50,000 cap on nonprofits.
That's correct.
Now, did that go, is that, I mean?
Yes, sir, and then on the annual, then on the annual budget, it goes in the annual budget. But last year, you all raised it to $73,500.
So that's still available this upcoming budget?
And what we discussed at the budget retreat was that we would just take applications from the current group that we give funding to, because we weren't going to expand to $73,500.
So does that mean these people can't request any money?
Well, they just, they could. They could come to a board meeting, and they could make that request to you, and you would deal with it on an individual basis. It's just that we're not going to deal, we're not going to go through what we did last year, which was spend four hours on nonprofit applications when the city doesn't take any applications at this point. So they send them to us.
Sorry for my confusion, but it's been a lot going on, so I apologize.
Any other questions regarding? Thank you, Mr. Brown. Sir? No, sir. Mr. Brown? You're up, sir, Tax Administrator, regarding Old Business.
Members of the board, I have been bugging Mr. Brown regarding taxes for quite a while. He has been very kind and considerate in trying to educate me. I'm one of the old folks who's on a fixed income, and I don't know what this appraisal is going to do. I do know that the General Assembly has not done anything for old folks in quite a while, and he's going to try and give us an update on what he thinks might be going on. Thank you.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to be before you tonight. As you know, we are in a 2023 reappraisal year. The notices of reevaluation or reappraisal did go out Friday, so taxpayers should be receiving their reassessment notices in the mail possibly tomorrow. The mail did not run a day being President's Day today. So approximately 32,000 notices hit the mail this past weekend. In regards to Commissioner Reeves' comments to me, there is an elderly-disabled exemption. That elderly-disabled exemption is available for taxpayers who are 65 years of age or older or totally and permanently disabled. And totally-permanently disabled would be for the other taxpayers. They would have to meet an income requirement. Right now, that income requirement is $33,800. If their income limit is below that threshold, then a taxpayer could qualify for the elderly-disabled.
Is that set by the state?
That is, that is by the North Carolina General Assembly. They set that. Now, that income limit does change each year, and it changes with COLA. So it does continue to go upward each year. So if COLA changes and goes up, it would. So COLA is driving that income factor. So that would basically be for a person that has a one-acre house and lot, they could get $25,000 or 50% of the appraised value off of their property. Now, with the reappraisal that we've just done in Lee County, approximately values have gone up approximately about 45%. So that's the increase in value. We're in a very strong market right now. We've tried to catch and arrive at true value with our appraisals, but it's a continually growing market that we have in Lee County right now. As far as any items with the General Assembly right now, I think there possibly have been some bill filed at the General Assembly. Certainly, there could be other things going on. I do know there are some counties that are talking about changes to the elderly-disabled exemption. Some of the discussion has kind of centered around the AMI, Aryan median income, and I think that is tied or related to HUD, if I'm not mistaken. And so that is something that very well could be an avenue. With that, the, you know, what the elderly-disabled exemption does in a small county for the $33,800 versus what it would do in a larger, more populated county that has, you know, higher property values and, you know, median income at $33,800, it would certainly make a different level. So for a taxpayer to qualify, it would be one taxpayer, you know, it would be the, you know, husband and wife's income for that, and we'd be talking about their... I'm trying to think of the... Had a loss for words there. Not like me usually. So it'd be all monies received as far as, you know...
Combined income.
Do what, sir?
Combined income?
Yes, for a husband and wife, it would be. For a single person, then it would still be, you know, the $33,800. So, you know, that could be something that, you know, if the General Assembly was going to look at something, you know, is that something they want to look at, you know, for adjusting that, an income level? You know, did they want to make another or different threshold? So that would totally be something up to the General Assembly.
Members of the board, I'd like to ask if we can get the manager to get in contact with our delegation and ask them for an update on what might be going on in regards to any tax legislation that would benefit us.
I'd be glad to ask.
On this particular topic? On this particular topic?
Any changes, any positive changes they might be making?
And exclusively for property tax, correct?
Yes.
Can I ask a question on the $25,000 or 50%? That doesn't change even though the reappraisals are moving everything up, right? Is that set by the legislature?
Well, the minimum is $25,000. If you had a $100,000 home, you could get the 50% off, which most people get the 50% off. That'd be $50,000. So if we do the reappraisal and property values go up, then certainly if it was $100,000, they'd get 50% off. That'd be $50,000. But if we go to $150,000, then we'd be taxing it at 75. Now, the other hand of that is what is going to happen with the tax rate this year. And that's certainly a function of the county commissioners. And with values going up, you know, I'm, you know, we'll just have to see where the tax rate goes when I turn over tax base April 17th.
Any other questions, Mr. Brown? Commissioner Levick?
Is that, do they have to file the paperwork once a year? Or how does that go?
They file it once, and then we do one-eighth reviews of those applications. So an elderly person would file with us... So an elderly person would file with us, you know, show us that they're, meet the age requirement, meet the income requirement, and we would process that application. We'd want to see some, some type of documentation showing the the level of income. For the person who is disabled, we would need to see their, you know, their application, and then also we'd have to have a a certificate, which is completed by a a licensed physician in North Carolina, and that also does include a DO, a Doctor of Osteopathic Medicine, to where they could actually deem them to be totally and permanently disabled. And and both would have to meet the income requirement.
Right. Do we have any, this will switch away from elderly disabled. What about veterans? Do we have anything for that?
Right. The veterans do have a, if they are a hundred percent disabled, the veterans can get a forty-five thousand dollar exemption from the, from the property tax, and that that amount has not changed. But they would have to file application, a state application with us, and then there's also a application that they can get filed locally and signed locally now, where they used to have to do it in Winston-Salem. They can do it locally now at the at the enrichment center, I believe, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, for the veterans officers out there who can assist them with another form, the NC DVA nine, if I'm not mistaken.
But they have to be disabled, not just veterans?
That, they, they would be disabled. For the veterans, they would be disabled, but there is no income requirement with the veteran. It's just a hundred percent disabled.
Thank you.
Commissioner, can I? Commissioner Vorbik?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Commissioner Reeves?
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp? Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Moving on to new business. Next item on the agenda is the Lee County Watershed Management Initiative presentation by the Environmental Affairs Board.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you for allowing us to present tonight. We have a wonderful project we'd like to go over with you. I know you've had a long meeting, but if you will indulge us, we rarely get an opportunity to come in front of you with our joint Environmental Affairs Board. Just to remind you, of course, as a joint board, we've had an opportunity, you all, of course, appoint three of the members, the City of Sanford appoints three, and Town of Broadway appoints one. And I just wanted to do a real quick, brief overview of this. I'm actually going to turn it over to Mr. Connor Jarvis. Connor is a bright young man who works here locally, was placed on the board, and unfortunately moved away, and is is no longer a part of our board, but he was instrumental in in kind of guiding this project and working with our affairs board and kind of getting this to where it is tonight. So we wanted to welcome him back and have him come present to you. I would like to take a moment, though, and recognize, we do have several members of our Environmental Affairs Board here tonight, and folks sitting right here. Just wanted to kind of let you know, these are citizens, that a lot of these folks you appointed, and it's a pleasure, we, we as the planning staff, get an opportunity to kind of work with them, as well as the folks from your environmental health department. So together, we kind of provide the staff liaison. Thank you to Mr. Lovick as the county liaison. He kind of helps us as we meet and kind of provides guidance a little bit in terms of the perspective for the county. So with that, I wanted to turn it over to Mr. Jarvis, have him come up and walk you through this. One thing I will say before I do that, I did want to kind of, kind of give a special thanks to the county commissioners and and Mr. or Dr. Crumpton, in that when we were kind of thinking about this proposal, we wanted to vet this by you all and kind of get some, some preliminary direction as to what kind of projects you all want us to do. So hopefully, you'll see the fruits of this effort, because we kind of got some guidance from you all, and you said this is one of the things that you kind of wanted us to look at. So we took that, we ran with it, and we want to provide this to you as information, kind of food for thought, and we'll certainly try to answer any questions that you might have about that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. I feel like I'm on the Tonight Show.
Now, you moved, where did you move?
I'm now in Pittsburgh, my wife and I. We actually moved.
Okay.
Yes. But honored to be here and speak the fruits of this project and the the board that was been brought from the board. You'll see this picture here is the convergence of the Deep River and the Rocky River as it flows from Chatham County to Lee County. So definitely a good picture of their stewardship. And I think it's interesting that we have this discussion prior, I mean, after, you know, a lot of the stuff that we've seen around land development. So good things to bear in mind if we're talking about things changing in the current, but we can look forwards to the future and say, what does that look like for Lee County? And how can we best initiate that? So this objective was brought to the Environmental Affairs Board to look at, what would it be if we were to do a holistic watershed management plan? What does it look like with all of our key stakeholders? So looking at different water quality concerns and the shared primary concerns amongst a diverse set of key stakeholders. So all the folks who, and all the groups that have influence and control on the different water quality aspects, in such a way that it will enable sustained economic growth and water quality enhancement and the health of Lee County. So a full-tiered approach. So Sanford specifically, you can see that it's doubled its growth since nineteen ninety. So from fifteen thousand to thirty thousand residents. And in twenty twenty-two, in April, we've got a statistic here, we've seen six thousand single-family home lots that have even began construction. So the land is changing. Now, how can we shepherd and be a steward of of this growth as it goes through? So that's what we're looking at in the lens of a watershed management plan. Oh, too fast there. So anticipated growth, this is a a map taken from Plan San Lee, and then overlaid there. The purple is the three watershed boundaries that are within the Lee County area. So the blue there, you're probably familiar with a lot of of the projected growth areas, first being the U.S. North Corridor, and then on Kelly Drive, close to where we we sit at the moment. And you can see that there's some overlap between the anticipated growth just because of the municipalities' hookups to sewer and what makes logistics sense, and the the watershed boundaries. So being mindful and kind of placing ourselves in the right mind's eye as we go through this. So before we get to the mechanics, the why, the heart, you know, the EAB is coming to you all to get your broader counsel to say, you know, the effort is to preserve the environmental resources while we preserve a local character. We heard from a lot of our different citizens about maintaining that sense of space and the green space, and enabling social equity. You know, how can we have equal access to nature, and everybody can get out and enjoy the the whole Lee County landscape that we've come to know? And the key emphasis to bear in mind here is that if the development is not formally directed, we could face urban sprawl. And how do we, you know, align ourselves in a way and put our our place in a way that we can, you know, ensure we have water stewardship, but also have aligned and directional growth that's, you know, healthy for the community? So I'll be respectful of you all's time here. Just looking at the the methodology, at an overview, I, we had first identified our key stakeholders. So those are the ones that had the key influence and control on the growth of the of the land. We defined points of contact with each of those interested parties. We conducted a formal, non-biased survey. So we had them rank them quantitatively and then gave them a voice to speak, and had some qualitative questions that were predefined. We identified the shared issues. So we mentioned that you, you know, we ranked the highest priorities. We summed those up to identify three key focal points that we focused on for this study. And then those three focal points were looked at in terms of case studies. So we said, what do our exemplary municipalities within North Carolina or the southeast do to solve these issues specifically? And then we framed those case studies in the lens of Lee County and said, what could it look like in in the paths down the road if we were to use those best practices in a way that could benefit our community? Brief overview of the timeline, so you can see how this has been developed. Marshall kind of alluded to how it was birthed, but in January, we defined the key stakeholders of last year. We established the points of contact in March. We had a draft that we kind of vetted and and talked about within the board in July and August, and then ultimately, and the the twenty-third, it was finalized and then moved to speak with the city council, and here we are today as well, so in February. As I mentioned, just covering the two different parts of that stakeholder engagement, a qualitative interview to allow them to have the voice to speak at the table, to have a free-form reply to questions, and then a quantitative aspect. This is one thing I want to emphasize here. Think golf when we're looking at the quantitative aspect. You want a low score. The top priorities got a one, and lower priorities got an eight. So in looking at this, here are the different watershed aspects. Think about these things in this chart, or any given problems that a water body can have. And then we asked our key stakeholders, rank these from one to eight, from your perspective, having influence and control of the area. So that way, we can get a unified vision on what are the key problems and the key issues that are most pertinent to our area? Oh. And so here is the list of the key stakeholders. We vetted this amongst the board and also got some second opinions outside as well. Lee County Soil and Water Commission, Planning Department, that's of of the Lee County area, Santhor Area Growth Alliance, Drinking Water Plant, the Public Health Department, the Little Buffalo Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, Triangle Land Conservancy. That's the Parks and Recreation Department of Sanford, and then you got the City of Sanford Parks and Record, Extra Recreation, so two different groups there. Building and Developers, and then the Farming Association, the Agriculture Center. And so each one of these key stakeholders placed their ranking from one to eight, and here's the the fruits of that, and along with the qualitative results. More graphically, I'll put it here so you can kind of really see what's going on. And one thing, this, these slides aren't to date for transparency, the Town of Broadway was also included in this as a as a key stakeholder. And although these numbers are not reflected for that, they did not change the focal points of the study for that. So it's worth noting out of honesty in terms of that. Top, shared stakeholders' aspects, we've got stormwater management at the first, as prevailing as the lead, natural habitat, wetland conservation, and then land use change and planning. So these were the three focal points that were were brought forward in the study. Some aspects around the qualitative interviews, you're welcome to read a more descriptive reply to it if you want the formal paper, it's in section four point one. But all in all, it was from different angles, the stakeholders really voiced that stormwater flooding was a big concern, and they think that a plan could be good, but the funding is kind of the the gray area in terms of, to just give you a broader perspective. It's worth to read it in its entirety in four point one. So as mentioned, the four, I mean, the three key focal points, stormwater management, we looked at exemplary practices, really focusing on infiltration basins and impervious surfaces, natural habitat and wetland conservation. One best management practice is going to be looking at critical area identification, we can define that a bit more, and then a revenue shed fund modeling, which we can further define. Land use change in planning, best practices were slope ordinances and greenways and riparian buffers, which we've actually come to know some in Lee County as well. So to, you know, not talk at you, but show you pictures and kind of visualize together here, here are some of the best practices around stormwater management. You can see the pervious surfaces there. So traditional stormwater management is to get it to the gutter and out through the the storm, storm drains. But pervious surfaces, as you can see here, we've got, to the right there is Raleigh, Center is in Chatham Park, and then, actually, it's a town from New Jersey on the the left there, the pervious pavement. This allows you to have runoff, seep into the ground, and you have less issues with flooding, a great, easy fix for areas that are going to be developed within those purple areas, that you can alleviate some flooding concerns in terms of that. So something good to consider within the management of design. Moving to our our second focal point, natural habitat and wetland conservation, two best practices to bring to to the board for consideration, first being the critical area identification. This map here you see to the right is from City of Durham, their city plan, they actually are able to denote out which areas are a critical concern for their natural habitat as they plan. So that way, as landing developments come, that's part of the the decision-making process. Second piece here, revenue shed, revenue shed funding. So both the City of Raleigh and City of Durham, and place a a piecemeal tax on water consumption, and that is lumped into a group, lump sum, that is used to allocate for things like wetland mitigation, or if you have, like, let's say, best practices or in stormwater management, we have just talked about, you can have it at a subsidy for the construction of that, all things to reinvest into the watershed that you're ultimately drawing from. So to give you a perspective of what that tax looks like, in Raleigh, it's a fifteen cents tax for every thousand gallons. So the general resident would have around sixty cents taken in addition to their water bill. So just to give you a gauge of of what Raleigh has implemented and how they're using those funds is to steward their watershed for that sense. But all flexible and open for that. I'm not trying to build suspense. I think battery might be dead. Oh. Okay. So, and this is the last of the three focal points here, the land use change in planning. So focusing first on slope ordinance, City of Durham has kind of like a decision tree in their development ordinance. They say, if you're developing in a watershed, and it's, the slope is a certain grade, and you're close to a water body, and you're going to disturb a certain amount, so there's three tiers, it kind of goes in the thing, you have to have certain guidances on how you're going to do that growth. So it's not necessarily used to restrict growth in watersheds, it's important to note. It's used to guide development and safeguard certain areas that are going to have the highest impact. So thinking of areas, you know, that have a more sensitive tread in terms of environment, and how do you steward that in a way that's appropriate? Second best practice around land use change in planning is going to be the greenways and riparian buffers. This is a picture from Raleigh at the bottom on House Creek Greenway. The city will purchase or through different entities acquire land that, you know, might be prone prone to flooding, but also helps, you know, safeguard against it downstream if they weren't to be developed. So it kind of adds as a a sponge, if you will, for sake of metaphors, for flooding in more residential areas. But also you-
What's a riparian buffer?
Yes, yes.
What is it?
A riparian buffer is, so it's a certain type of ecosystem that's right next to streams. And what happens is, is if if you have land that gets developed around that stream, you'll have a aspirated amount of runoff. And so those streams will flood quicker. But a riparian buffer is, is it acts like a sponge for that runoff. Those trees and that vegetation, you know, it preserves the natural environment, but it helps alleviate and slow that runoff as it gets to there. So as we have more and more development of surfaces like this, you know, it will runoff quickly, but then if you have that riparian buffer, for sake of the term, it allows that seeping and soaking. But if you do it in a way that's strategic, you can also have a nice public asset like trails or bike paths, as Raleigh has implemented, and they're, you know, endearly known as the City of Spokes, just as much as the City of Oaks, because of all their bike trails. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes.
Okay. It's a good question. Okay. So this is a lot of information, and I empathize, because I know we've already had a lot presented to us earlier tonight. So here's the key takeaways. And we have this nice picture- And we have this nice picture of Kiwanis Park, just before fall, you know, in the season of change. And we are, you know, in a season of change, in the sense as well. So the first proposal, and I bring this to you all with respect, you know, you all have a broader view of the council, the council has a broader view of the county than the EAB, but these can be viewed as tools in the hand for development, so it's not a one fix-all. First of which is to revise the existing plan sand lee within its new development to include a natural environment wetlands place type. This would kind of mimic what Durham has in place, so you can view those different aspects of the land in one unified fashion. The second is going to be to review the unified development ordinance to include that specific slope ordinance that Durham has. It's a great decision-making tool that they've used to kind of direct the land development and ease it in a way, as they encroach upon watersheds, in a suitable and responsible way. The third is going to be, and place a preference on infiltrative stormwater management. So now we're thinking the lens of, like, impervious surfaces versus pervious surfaces. As you get into wetland areas, the more pervious surfaces, you know, and areas that don't, you know, like, these are, you know, would induce runoff, but the more you can engineer in and incentivize areas that are going to soak up that water at a more efficient rate, is going to be a benefit to the community as it grows, and the benefits of the watershed as it, you know, bears that growth. Fourth is to implement a revenue shed plan for Lee County. Durham and Raleigh have seen this to be a big success for driving a lot of the stormwater management and, you know, land proposals that they've worked with. It could be a good tool for Lee County if the considerations around the taxes make sense. And then, you know, what those funds would be used for would need to be brought to the broader mind of the council as well. Fifth, which wasn't explicitly discussed in here, but is detailed more in our paper, that, you know, is there, and I'm glad to speak to questions as well, is to utilize existing potential funding, and this is going to be federal and state funding, from the Clean Water Act and other legislations, to prioritize areas prior to development. So, this is going to be Clean Water Act funding to help restore impaired waterways. And there are a couple impaired waterways in Lee County that would be applicable for projects like this, that could be used to extend greenways if we were able to define how that project would enable that specific water body criteria. But, moving you to next steps, these five recommendations are detailed in section six of the formal paper, so, it'll be a lot more verbose than I can be to you at eight-thirty on a Tuesday night. But this initiative proposal was intended to serve as a reference document for you all, so this is only beginning the discussion and giving you the best practices of our counterpart communities.
Mr. Connor, thank you, or, excuse me, Connor Jarvis. Could you please identify all the folks that are on the board that are here this evening?
Absolutely. Would you like me to maybe just have them?
Please, please.
So, Brooks, you want to come on up?
Hi.
This is Brooks Gage, she's a citizen, been on for twenty-plus years.
Yeah, on and off. I live on Lord Ashley Drive, and I've been on the board that long, and a lot of the time, we would just react to an environmental threat that would start to occur, you know, a landfill, contaminated water. Oh, I said I wasn't going to talk a lot.
No. I thought you were looking at me for clarification.
Oh, well, so, I'll finish quickly. But this is really a good overview of new, sort of innovative thinking that we could put in our UDO and things like that, to enact policies that would protect our water supply, correct drainage problems, and we've all seen those around town, and also give options to developers and builders of ways to make the new communities work better for the residents. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Chairman, next is Malia O'Neill.
Can you hear anyone? I'm Malia O'Neill, and I am a private citizen of Sanford.
Next is actually the chairman of the EAB, Jeff Griffith, and he is actually the Broadway representative. And Jeff has been our chairman for a couple of years now.
I'm not a scientist, I'm a historian, but in the past year, the work that Connor and other people on the Environmental Affairs Board have done has really been good. I feel like I've been on this board for many years, and really didn't think we were doing much, but I think we're now beginning to find ways to put something together that really can help Lee County, Sanford, and Broadway. So, thank you very much.
And last, we have Berkeley Hillis.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Berkeley Griffin Hillis. I am so excited, I'm a new member on the EAB, you guys appointed me. I live in, on Rena Lane, it's up in that north US one corridor, that is one of those highlighted sections that's both impacted by watershed, and it's also an area of high development. So this matters a lot to a lot of people who live here. And so I'm really excited to be on the Environmental Affairs Board. We are looking towards the future. When you are looking at the environment, there's really no point in looking at the past, but we can make change now. And so that's why I'm so excited that Connor and Marshall and other members of the board did such instrumental work in bringing this to you. Thanks.
Thank you. Questions of the board? Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Vorbek?
Will you be presenting to the city as well?
Actually, Commissioner Vorbek, we already presented to the city at their meeting in the SARS Tuesday in this month, February.
Okay.
Commissioner Connect, no questions. Commissioner Lovick?
Just to comment, I'm on the Environmental Affairs Board and proud of these guys. As you can tell, there's a lot smarter folks than I am on that board. And we're truly going to miss Connor on that, and I hate we're losing you, but I know you can do good things for Chatham County also, so, but thank you guys for what you do for our community. It's kind of one of those boards that doesn't get a lot of attention until something goes wrong, but really appreciate being on the board with you guys, and you being here tonight and presenting this. Thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
I just want to compliment you all on this presentation, it's very professional and obviously holds a lot of weight. The other thing I would have is a question, what do we do with such a thing? Dr. Crumpton, you're in the catbird seat there, you can tell us what to do, and you don't have to do it.
I think that's a question for Ms. Mentor, so.
Okay.
No, I think, you know, I think, you know, over the years, we've tried to engage the Environmental Affairs Board and try to address some issues, it just never got any traction. I think this report is a really good report. I think it has a lot of good ideas in it, the board needs to digest and take a look at. And I know that, talking with Marshall, we've talked about updating the land use plan, and it probably needs to be done sooner rather than later. There's a lot going on in the county, and, you know, some of the issues that came up tonight in our public hearings, you know, it kind of shows that, you know, after, what, five, six years, we've had this implemented, that we're already needing changes, so it'd be the appropriate time to start discussing this report as part of the change in the land use plan as well.
And Dr. Crumpton, if you may, I'll add to that. I know, early on, Commissioner Carver, when we sat down with this group, we know that some of the recommendations in there are, there is no low-hanging fruit, so to speak, with a lot of this stuff. And so, to Dr. Crumpton's point, I think I presented to you all at retreat discussions about growth, and kind of planning, and those kind of things, so I think a lot of things that he touched on, or Connor touched on in this, with the UDO, there are some opportunities there that we can do something sooner than others, but for example, the water tax, for lack of a better description, you know, something like that, that's a big project. You know, you're talking about staffing, that's probably a regional thing, where the city, the county would kind of work together, and so, there are some things here we recognize, I think really what we wanted to do, when you asked us to look into is, give you, what do other communities do, how do they kind of address these things, to start giving you some ideas as to, you know, to your point, how do you address these things? It may not be something we can do today, but it's things we need to be thinking about in the future, you know, as we think about planning and growth and some of these things. One other comment, too, Ms. Chairman, if you'll indulge me for a minute, I just wanted to build on the good feelings and kind of echo the sentiments earlier with Dr. Crumpton leaving, I just wanted to kind of publicly take a minute and express my thanks for the support that Dr. Crumpton has shown us. As a joint department and joint staff, it's a little challenging sometimes working for the city, and the county, and the Town of Broadway, we run into some unique situations, but I have been working with Dr. Crumpton since he's been here, at least during his second tenure, and it's been a pleasure to work with him. So, again, best of luck to you, sir, as you move forward.
Thank you, Marshall, you've done a great job, too. Thank you.
Don't leave, I have questions. I'm sorry. I have questions.
Yes, sir.
I noticed that it's a neat wording, revenue shed?
Mm-hmm.
And when I was reading the screen and the interpretation, that's from the water usage through the water bill? Is that how it's funded in Durham?
I don't know, I'll let Connor come back out specifically speak of that, but I know in other communities, it's known sometimes as, like, I think what it referred to is like a stormwater tax. I remember, I think the city was Charlotte, Micklenburg County was one of the first to do it years ago.
Stormwater tax, oh my word.
I'll certainly.
Is that in your purview, Mr. Brown? Stormwater tax?
No, that's not it, it is.
It's a fee, okay.
That was just a term that was used in the first.
So did you say that Durham actually puts it in the water bill?
So Durham and Raleigh both have this revenue shed model, and it's based off of a usage of a consumption.
Okay.
And a tax on that. So, I can't remember the numbers off my head transparently, but for Raleigh, for case in point, for every thousand gallons, fifteen cents of that usage is placed within this tax fund, and that, they use that tax fund to fund, you know, stormwater management, or, you know, if you wanted to have, like, land acquisition, you could give to-
Is there a cap on that fee?
I would direct you to, if you want the details, the paper that accompanies this report has the citations, and you can definitely look at that citation and read more details than I could, you know, preach on this.
I'm just saying, because I'm thinking, it may not be much for a homeowner, but for a business, it changes the numbers big time.
So, one thing you can keep in mind, and it is detailed in terms of that, is, is do you consider a different tiered approach? So, you know, traditional homeowners or residents, you have a certain pricing, if you have larger industrial organizations, Pfizer being one big water user, you know, do you have a different tiered approach in terms of, you know, the pricing of that tax?
Let me interrupt you, because we're getting into minutia here, but you do know that the City of Sanford runs the water bills. County has no impact.
To that end, to that end, that's why I talked about, some of these issues are probably more regional, and they need to be kind of worked together. So again, I think as we talked about, like, at retreat, as we look at planning and growth kind of things like that, if something like that's going to go into place, I agree, yeah, it's beyond just the scope of the county nor the city. I think it's probably something that needs to be looked at from a regional perspective. Because again, the point of this is, the geography and your watersheds don't follow political boundaries, so both of you are dealing with these issues.
Correct. I was just looking at the funding source.
Yeah, absolutely.
The non-traditional pollutant, unfortunately roadside trash is hideous in this county, in the state in general. And unfortunately, the plastics that degrade, that goes into our watershed, it goes into our water sources, and it's just a concern that is something we need to focus on. And critical area identification, I notice that's item number one on the proposed path forward, the natural environment wetland place type, that's going to be an extensive Just in Lee County alone, so, you're up to it? Is your board up to it? I know you're not with us anymore.
So I appreciate, these questions are great. First, talking about the microplastics and how they degrade, I think it is an important issue in terms of non-traditional, but trying to keep, you know, the efforts of our stakeholders and have them determine what the priority of the report would be, it didn't make one of the focal points for the study, so that's why it wasn't considered within the paper that accompanies this. But I do agree with your statements around the importance of it in terms of human health and environment. Second piece around item number one here, our proposed path forward, revised existing plan sand lee, in this paper that accompanies this, it details out the areas that have high biological diversity, and it shows, I think, it's single digits, there are certain areas that just have an exemplary ecosystem that are key for preserving. So, those are detailed out in the report, and I would definitely recommend taking a look at it on the placement of it, and those areas would be kind of elevated to be on the same level plane for the planned sand lee, when you're looking at natural place types. So, it was something that was considered within the paper, and it's taken from a resource that's existing within the Lee County area.
Thank you. Any other questions? We have nothing further. Thank you very much to you and the board, and we look forward to some more details. All right, moving on to new business, item number B, a letter B, that is, amendment to financial advisory agreement with Davenport Public Finance.
Yes, sir, Commissioner. We are bringing for you a proposal from Davenport Public Finance regarding our future financings that will be coming up. They have laid out their proposed fees as we move forward, and as I explained in the abstract, these fees will be spread amongst the various projects that the financings are related to. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Reeves? Motion's been made to approve, continue on with questions. Commissioner Vorbek?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick? Commissioner Carver? Motion been made to approve the requesting board commissioners to approve the proposed addendum to our financial advisory agreement with Davenport Public Finances, and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is consider resolutions supporting Lee County schools. And if I could get Commissioner Carver?
I move that we approve the following resolution, resolution supporting the Lee County Board of Education's effort in seeking change of school calendar law, whereas Lee County Board of Education is elected to provide guidance and make decisions that are in the best interest of students in Lee County schools, and whereas the Lee County Board of Education is subject to this school calendar law adopted by the General Assembly, which sets the start date of traditional public schools, and whereas the Lee County Board of Education is seeking legislation giving schools flexibility and setting traditional school calendar dates, and whereas the Lee County Board of Education chairperson appeared before the county commissioners on February sixth, two thousand twenty-three, seeking support for state legislation to follow flexibility in setting the school's annual calendar, and now therefore be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners supports the Lee County Board of Education in its efforts to make decisions it feels is in the best interest of the students of Lee County public schools, and seeks changes to state law authorizing school calendar flexibility and setting the annual calendar. Further, the commissioners authorized the clerk of the board to forward copies of this resolution to State Senator Jim Bergen and State House Representative- and State House Representative John Saul's adopted this the 20th day of February 2023 to be signed by Kirk D. Smith.
You've heard the resolution. Motion's been made to approve the resolution considering supporting Lee County schools. Any further discussion?
I got a question for county attorney. Does this by any means give support to their decision to move forward with their calendar?
In my opinion, this gives support for them to seek legislation changing the school calendar law.
Nothing to do with their decision on moving their calendar?
No, sir.
All right.
I believe so. I believe that's referenced in the resolution.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on, managers' report, strategic plan report out. Madam Clerk.
Good evening, commissioners. For the sake of time, I will not go through all of the items in this report. We haven't had one since July, so it's pretty packed, which is a good thing because that means we're making progress on our goals. I will note a couple items, just new departments that are on our list are the Register of Deeds and Emergency Services. And actually, I got the Tax Department on there with our pictometry images to update our information for, well, any interested parties in looking at that information, but also for future development. And I recently did talk to our strategic plan consultant, Cheryl Trent. We do not have the updated strategic plan for you just yet. But hopefully at one of our March meetings, we'll be bringing that to you for review and approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Questions for Ms. Hall? Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Vorbik?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Lovick? Commissioner Carver?
Only comment is that was a strategic approach to tonight. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Monthly financial sales tax report. Ms. Iceman?
Good evening. You have the monthly financial report for January in your agenda packets. Please remember that sales tax revenues run three months behind. Our tax collections as a percentage of the budget are at 95 and a half percent, almost identical to the same period last fiscal year. In reviewing the expenditures, the targeted percentage used is 58.33%. There are several departments that are over. If you exclude incumbences, the following departments remain over the target. Finance, Strategic Services, and IT due to the payment of annual agreements. Juvenile detention is over due to the quantity and state duration of juveniles. EMS is over due to the purchase of CPR machines. Planning is over due to the third quarter payment for services to the city. And Human Services nonprofits are over due to the lump sum payment to the NC Veterans Memorial. The November sales tax report is also attached, and we are 11.03% above the same period last fiscal year.
Any questions for Ms. Iceman? Commissioner Carver?
No.
Commissioner Lovick? Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Vorbik?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Sharp? Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is managers' report. Sir, this is your last one.
Yes, sir. I'm having IT issues right now. Of course, writing my last report. Here we go.
I think you should have to sing it.
The update on the what?
Said, I think you have to sing it.
Update on the Moore Training Facility.
Your microphone.
Excuse me. Sorry, I leaned away. The tear quest continues to work at the facility and pretty much confined to the area around the tank now where they're cleaning up and doing the vacuum events. We have several no further action letters from DEQ, but we actually technically, I guess, need four more based on the new wells that are around the old tank. So they continue to work there. And in the coming month or two, the new county manager will have to ask you for probably some more money to make sure we can keep paying the bills to get this done. But we're a lot further along today than I thought we would be. And hopefully this won't take too much longer to clean up. The multi-sports complex, the planning continues to go on with that. We met with the local government commission today and went over our financing plan for the multi-sports complex. Bids are due June 29th. It's going to be the proposal and hopefully have those out in a month or so. So get those out, get those bids in. There's a good chance that if the bids come in under, we can end up before the LGC at their July 11th meeting. If that doesn't make it, the idea is to be at the August 1st meeting of the LGC to get that project moving. Good news on Horton Pool. The contractor, JMT, has really made a lot of progress on the bath house and expecting completion on the bath house in March. The pool is still a work in process. And, but we're still planning on having that completed in May. So still working on some things at the phase, on the phase one projects at our four parks. But we've moved on to phase two at Kiwanis-Children's Park and Temple Park. And hopefully we'll be seeing some work at those projects in the next couple of months. Library project, continue to work on that project. We've done some soil borings out at the site so that vines can work with Sam and Sanford contractors to start developing cost estimates. And we can get those numbers back to the board for review. And we're still kind of trying to move forward with the historic courthouse project. The estimates continue to go up and the amount of work that we can have done continues to go down. So hopefully there'll be some good news at the commissioners, one of the March meetings about where we're going with the courthouse, old historic courthouse. And sir, that's my report for tonight. And again, thank you to the board for their support. The staff that remains, thank you for y'all's support. And thank you to the press. Had a great relationship with the press for 15 years, eight months. And I'm very fortunate for that as well. So thank you all.
Thank you. Now for commissioners' comments, we'll start with Commissioner Carver.
You asked me to give a report on our trip. Do you think it would be appropriate to wait till the next meeting to do that?
Let's wait till the next meeting.
I thought that was a good point. Other than that, I'm sure everybody's going to say well done to Dr. Crumpton. I, I've grown a lot under your supervision and tutoring, I think. I can't say that I had the big picture when I came, but you've really helped me and I appreciate it. I always have felt respected and listened to, whether or not we agreed or not. Well, there you go. But for the most part, I think I grew because of our relationship and I'm thankful for it. I wish you Godspeed.
Thank you, sir.
Again, tonight, I know a crowd has gone, but it's our democracy. You know, there's such a good thing about this United States of America that we have people can come out of a lot of countries they don't get to do this. So I'm just thankful to people coming out and, you know, demonstrating their rights. Like to congratulate Dr. Crumpton. I hadn't known you a really long time, but I consider you my friend. I really do. As Bill mentioned, your guidance is, you know, there's some people you can trust immediately and some you can't trust in a long time. But immediately, I just felt the trust that we had and I appreciate that. And congratulations to the ones coming in. They got big shoes to fill, my friend. But I know you've trained them well.
They're ready.
Yeah. But congratulations to all those folks out there too. It's an exciting time for our county. And I know you've left us in good hands and appreciate that so much. So just don't run off the county too quick. And I'll save my comments to about the Washington trip later, next meeting also. But thank you so much. We're going to miss you, my friend. Thank you.
Madam Attorney, I'm not going to pass you up.
When I started, I had no idea what I was getting myself into. And I remember Dr. Crumpton saying, you wouldn't get this at the DA's office. And he was right. But, but seriously, over the seven years, which is insane that I've been here, I know, I can't, I couldn't have done any of this without, without John's help. So I really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
You kind of went out of order, didn't you?
Well, I grabbed the attorney too, so I'm going to go this way.
Okay. Yeah, just like everyone else said, thank you, John, for the time here spent in Lee County. You've done a lot of great things here. And thank you for your friendship. And the thing that I remember most is if I ask you something, you'll be honest and tell me, yeah, we can do that or no, we can't. Thank you for that and good luck going forward to you and your family.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
I just have to ask you, you've done a fantastic job all these years. But did you plan to leave us in the hand of all the ladies and? That was, that was some maneuver, I have to give it to you. I'm comfortable with every one of them, but it was just interesting to me that we may have, I don't know of any other local government that has all women leadership.
Durham County's commissioners are all women.
Well, I'm looking at Michael Brown there. He's the Lone Ranger right now.
I don't count that. We're the first. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Vorbik?
Well, I want to say thank you as well in our few short months together. Sad that I don't get to work as long with you as everyone else has. But I'm excited for Lisa and what she's going to accomplish here. And wish you the best and, you know, save me a tea time.
I will do that.
Yeah. With all my free.
He's already asked.
With all my free time. I'll figure that out.
Commissioner Connect?
It's just been an absolute pleasure. I appreciate it. Thank you for all your guidance and help making my job easier. I thank you.
I just need to add an additional point here regarding February 14th. We held the Sharon Harris exercise. And I did pummel you all with emails. And the requirement is, is one of the responsibilities is to inform the commissioners of what is going on at the point that it happened. So we do have this coming up in April on the 28th. Excuse me, on April, in April, I don't have the exact date on the exercise. But it'll be FEMA directed and FEMA graded as a matter of fact. On the 28th of April, the Sand Hill Center will be holding their community breakfast. So if you can put that on your agenda, I'm going to need someone to fill in for me. My mother-in-law's 95th birthday is on that Saturday. The following day, I will be traveling. So make sure one of you or all of you can make that breakfast. It's awesome amount of information coming across. Dr. Crumpton?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say one thing. You still have a mission from Commissioner Reeves and his request to fulfill. So we're going to, we're going to make sure you follow through on that. And the fact that this meeting has gone, what?
Too long.
Three hours, 10 minutes.
Three hours and four minutes. You earned your pay today, so I do appreciate that. I do want to say thank you for fostering and developing and nurturing a staff that is coming in behind you. And I suspect that they will do well and they will continue on the traditions of Dr. John A. Crumpton in Lee County. But I must add that throughout my time on the Board of Directors of the state of North Carolina's County Commission Association, I have never, ever been amazed at the number of people across the state that know John Crumpton, that know his expertise, that respect his knowledge and his wealth of information. And I just can't say enough. And I hope you continue working with the school of government or whatever you endeavor to do. And we'll probably run into you somewhere, somewhere down the road, no doubt.
You probably will.
So thank you very much, Dr. Crumpton.
Thank you, sir.
Just a reminder, on Thursday, there is a get-together with Dr. Crumpton at the Gordon Wicker Room, starting at 1:00. And hope to see a crowd there. Anything?
My crowd will be there. My whole family will be there.
Outstanding. Motion's been made to adjourn. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. We are now adjourned. Thank you very much.